Call to order the Claremore Cultural Development Authority meeting, please call the roll.
Cottum, here. Thelman.
Here.
Michael, Callender, Long.
Present.
Ruckerhoff.
Here.
Bowlby.
Present.
McSpadden.
Yes.
Irwin.
Here.
How are we doing?
If you'll join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, an invocation by Councilor Irwin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, thank you for this time as we gather with our councilor, and I just pray that you help us to make the decisions that glorify you in everything we do. In Jesus's name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Do we have anybody for call to the public?
None.
Do we have a motion to accept the agenda as printed?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Call the roll.
Thelman.
Yes.
Ruckerhoff.
Yes.
Cottum, yes. Long.
Yes.
Bowlby.
Yes.
McSpadden.
Yes.
Irwin.
Yes.
Any items unforeseen?
None.
Current business, do we have a motion to approve the consent items as printed?
Seven. Second.
A motion in two seconds, any discussion? Call the roll.
Bowlby.
Yes.
Irwin.
Yes.
Cottum.
Yes.
Thelman.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Ruckerhoff.
Yes.
McSpadden.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion adjourned second, call the roll.
McSpadden.
Yes.
Thelman.
Yes.
Cottum.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Ruckerhoff.
Yes.
Bowlby.
Yes.
Irwin.
Yes.
Call to order the Claremore Public Works Authority meeting, note the roll, we have a motion to accept the agenda as printed.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Call the roll.
Thelman.
Yes.
Cottum.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Ruckerhoff.
Yes.
Bowlby.
Yes.
McSpadden.
Yes.
Irwin.
Yes.
Any items unforeseen?
None.
Current business, do we have a motion to accept the consent items as printed?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Call the roll.
Thelman.
Yes.
Bowlby.
Yes.
McSpadden.
Yes.
Irwin.
Yes.
Cottum.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Ruckerhoff.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion adjourned second, call the roll.
Thelman.
Yes.
Cottum.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Ruckerhoff.
Yes.
Bowlby.
Yes.
McSpadden.
Yes.
Irwin.
Yes.
That was the one to adjourn, right?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Call to order this Claremore City Council meeting, note the roll, do we have a motion to accept the agenda as printed?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Call the roll.
Thelman.
Yes.
Cottum.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Ruckerhoff.
Yes.
Bowlby.
Yes.
McSpadden.
Yes.
Irwin.
Yes.
Any items unforeseen?
None.
Mayor's report and appointments, none tonight. Awards and presentations, communications, we have a proclamation to give tonight recognizing October is National Manufacturing Month. Are you going to come up here with me?
I would love to. Awesome.
It's just you and me?
No, really.
Okay. I tried to read out there, so I didn't. Okay, let's do seven.
Center of attention. Here, you guys face them. Okay, you're giving me a word. Sorry. Proclamation. Whereas, manufacturing remains a cornerstone of Claremore's economy, as well as that of the state of Oklahoma and the United States of America. Whereas, October 2025 is recognized as National Manufacturing Month, a time to celebrate modern manufacturing and the vast career opportunities this dynamic sector provides. Whereas, Claremore is home to world-class manufacturers whose products from pumps to poles to aircraft wings and advanced nanofibers support vital industries such as energy, telecommunications, aerospace, and healthcare, generating global impact and, in 2025 alone, 99 million in capital investments and 660 new manufacturing jobs.
That's here, right?
That's right. Whereas, according to the Manufacturing Institute in Deloitte, the U.S. will see nearly 4 million manufacturing jobs openings by 2030 with an average annual salary of $88,406, representing tremendous opportunity for growth, innovation, and prosperity. Whereas, continues to champion the development of a strong industrial talent pipeline, working hand-in-hand with public schools, career, and technology programs, and local industries to prepare tomorrow's workforce. Whereas, the city of Claremore extends its deep appreciation to the many manufacturing companies that have chosen to operate in our community, providing quality jobs for our residents and serving as vital contributors to our local and national economy. Now therefore, I, Debbie Long, along with the Claremore City Council, hereby proclaim the month of October 2025 as National Manufacturing Month in Claremore and encourage all citizens to recognize the contributions of local manufacturers and the opportunities they create for the future of our city and nation.
Thank you. Okay. Second is Claremore Economic Development Quarterly Update, Ms. Maggie Roman.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. As was just shared, October is National Manufacturing Month, and we are proud in Claremore. The last quarter alone, we've celebrated $99 million of capital investment, over 660 jobs being created on behalf of the work that the team at Claremore Economic Development has fostered alongside of those companies. So very excited for that. There have been many years that we have not necessarily seen that as an entire community, much less in a quarter. So certainly very active. We'll let you go to the next slide, Tim. Thank you. So in alignment with that, we also come to share that we have received another International Economic Development Award, as well as Southern Economic Development Award, and a Journal Record Award. Most of that work has been alongside the two voters at the top would be the Journal Record and Southern Economic Development are in honor of the scholarship program that we have been operating in partnership with you all in Rogers County. Brayley will share a little bit more about updates on that program forward, but certainly excited to see that we not only internally believe that that's been a transformational program, but see that recognition in more global perspectives. The bottom voter represents a partnership between our organization alongside Sequoia Public Schools, just north of Claremore here, and Northeast Tech. And so that is a Career Connections Program where we do career awareness with sixth and seventh graders in order to start turning the wheels about what opportunities lie here. I often go as a graduate of that high school and share that I drove up and down Highway 66. I never thought about what was in those boxes and certainly didn't think about the career opportunities that lay there, much less the fact that in Claremore, on average, our manufacturing sector pays $92,000 for a high school diploma or GED diploma. So a lot of phenomenal opportunity here, and we want to make sure that our students are aware of that and see that we can maintain that talent here. And so with that, we'll kind of highlight again about that scholarship program. As a reminder, these numbers are reflective of both the city and county tranches of funding related to that. We are, for what was supposed to be a six-month program, are close to year three in that, and we are winding down. So we will close that in December. That funding was temporary and that will end. We are working on obtaining permanent funding for that to continue, but there will be a little pause. As you may recall, we had about two weeks to stand this program up, which was a lot. And so in that process, while it certainly has had success, there are some things we'd like to do differently as we go to fund that permanently. And so we'll take the time to evaluate and kind of shift that forward. Overall, I'm going to let you go back one slide for me. Overall, you've had a number of, nearly 300 applicants accepted. Of those, we've had 235 that have been awarded the scholarship. There are a number of those that are waiting to enroll into October classes at Northeast Tech, with over 72% of those currently employed. And so with that, you'll recall that we had to maintain a low-to-modern-income percentage of 51. We're not surprised that we're still well above that. So you see the scholarship funding that's been awarded. We do anticipate that we will tip the $500,000 mark before the end of the program, and so still a lot of activity there. One of the biggest changes from the last time we kind of updated you on this program today, the top enrollment by program, those six programs have still been in the top six, but it's kind of been an active leaderboard, not unlike our football season. But there's some movement happening there that has been maybe inconsistent with what we've seen to date. And so very interesting as we see CNC kind of jumping, that machining program jump up. Of those 600 jobs we've seen created in our community, about 185 of those represent CNC, so not surprising there. We as an organization are trying to push more adults, these are adults in these training programs, into those career opportunities because there is a significant gap of workforce in that field compared to the amount of job openings we have. And so definitely a strong need there. The other thing that you're going to see pop in there that might look a little different than the past is driver's ed. And so you're probably going, okay, driver's ed, help me understand that, right? Given that we don't have mass public transportation, you all acknowledge that likely unless you live close to that employer, in order to be actively engaged, you know, engaging in employment, you must have a driver's license and then subsequently a car, you know, in order to get into that. We also see that CDL program enrollment growing. Obviously, a prerequisite to that is to have a driver's license before you can then go on to get your CDL to go into truck driving training, and so both of those are related. And so we feel like that's overcoming a barrier to workforce entry as we get more people in that as well. So a little different approach and kind of conversation there, but certainly something we wanted to flag for you. With that, it is my honor to introduce our new Talent Initiatives Coordinator, Brayley Franks. Brayley has joined us in the last five weeks now, and will be leading this work going forward, but has already jumped in. And so in five weeks, she's already gone a lot, we'll let her share a little bit about that.
As Maggie mentioned, my name is Brayley Franks. I'm the Talent Initiatives Coordinator, and my role focuses primarily on workforce and education. Like she said, I am very early on in this adventure. I have learned so much, and I continue every day to learn so much information, and I'm super excited to see where I grow within my team. One of the programs that I'm working on is Career Connections. This is a partnership between Sequoia and Northeast Tech where we bring in over 12 industries, from manufacturing to cosmetology, to speak with the middle school and high schoolers. Just this last semester, they were awarded a International Economic Development Council Excellence in Economic Development. To wrap up this program, they will hold a student-led career expo, which is essentially where a student will pick a career path and present it to faculty and staff, and a CETA will be there as well. The next slide. As we know, Manufacturing Month is in October, and for us to honor this, we have partnered with Claremore High School to bring in different manufacturing companies. We have about 14 coming. Through this program, we will have 1,100 students coming in to speak with all these different opportunities within manufacturing to know that it is modernized, it's not what it used to be. With the next slide. The last thing I have is save the date for December 2nd. We'll have a Build My Future hosted by the Home Builder Association of Prater Tulsa, bringing together high schoolers within Rogers County just to learn more about what they have for construction and a hands-on to get a feel of kind of what they have as well. So if you guys want to come out to that, absolutely, we can send you guys some more information on that. But that wraps up what I have. Do you have anything else? I haven't opened up for any questions.
What's the average age of the scholarship recipients?
So your two highest demographic ages are 18 to 24 and 50 to 55. And so 50 to 55 continues to trail right behind that 18 to 24. 18 to 24, not surprising. But if you look at kind of the healthcare retraining, or even, I was a welder, maybe I don't want to be climbing around and I want to be programming a machine where I'm upright, or I may be in climate controlled or have the ability to sit. And so not surprisingly, we see rescaling and retraining there. But yeah, 50 to 55 is very close on the tails, so 18 to 24.
Most, go ahead.
I was going to say, it's because they need a career change or different accommodations, like that point, like, yeah.
Yeah, or, you know, we also see people kind of hit their talent talk, right? And so in order to get that next level of income or to take a management position, they need some kind of credentialing in order to get that next level promotion to level up. And so you see people who maybe have been practicing pieces of a skill that weren't actually credentialed in order to really level up to a management level in that perspective, and so we see some of that happen as well.
What percentage of graduates are employed?
So out of Rogers County currently, so we have about a 62 response rate, right? So it's not everyone, but of those that have responded thus far, 72% are employed.
Fantastic. In the field, they completed their.
So yeah, still analyzing which field that they're in, and then part into manufacturing in particular, because three of your six programs, six programs of enrollment are manufacturing, we'll do a target marketing campaign specific to the career portal that we host to try to drive not only those that have participated in the scholarship in those fields, but also citizens in general, to try to drive them into those job opportunities there as well.
Any ideas why the 28% aren't employed?
So some of that, if they're still training, right? If they're doing the training full-time, then they may not be, and then you've also got nonrespondents in that as well, and so there's a mix there.
Pardon my ignorance, and you may have said it, but in the CDL program, what's the acronym CCMA stand for?
So that's the Certified Medical Assistant. So that's kind of the step into your CNA and maybe not figure nursing.
Well, the 10 that shows they are waiting, and the program ends in December, so how does that work on the funding?
So there, as long as, so we have through 2016 to actually extend the funds, but it has to be committed by December of this year. And so the enrollment periods that will happen, October to Janey, or basically December for January, whether it's a short-term program, we have some that are starting in November, they're 10-week programs, so obviously those will be extended. But if they're in a program that starts in January, then as long as they're committed, enrolled, and invoiced prior to that, then they can be included in that as well.
And then they have to finish by the end of, they actually have to finish the education by the end of December next year?
So yeah, 2026 is the actual education finish, which most of these, again, are short-term programs, so we're not talking about, you know, more than 12 months in study. So a lot of them are six to 10 weeks or two weeks even.
Yeah, I think it's exciting, and it would be good to see this be permanent.
Yes.
I agree. Obviously, the success has been wonderful.
Yes. But I think we were quite surprised, I mean, originally we started out with $50,000, as you recall, and then it kind of grew to $100,000, and it continues to grow. And we have one final additional tranche that we're expecting in the next couple of weeks. And so playing the balance, so also as context, we have not actively promoted this in over a year.
Wow.
So we are not marketing it intentionally because we don't have the, you know, it's one of those, if you market it, then you don't have the funding. You know, they have a challenge. And so all of these are kind of either, it's previously heard about it, or word of mouth, or reverse referrals from other nonprofits, Northeast Tech, things of that sort. So that's kind of been the hard part to gauge and manage forward regarding permanent funding, is what is the real demand versus the reactive demand, and at what point do you hit a plateau on the band? Or do you go? Because you saw people, you know, constantly turning and ebbing and all of that, or moving in the community and so on and so forth. So all of those are questions we also have as we start to really analyze and look at the data coming through as we continue to get respondents. A lot of those just finished, when we talked about people that haven't even started the program, right? And so also, as we have people just finishing, trying to measure, are they still actively employed? Did they go into another field? How did that elevate? How did that change their income? To really understand the full impact is the last thing we want to do, is go, oh, it was a program, you know, let's go get more funding, and then it's not actually moving the needle in the ways that we intended.
Brayley? I just have a couple more questions for Brayley. You said that manufacturing has really changed. I know you're new to the role, but can you, like, have you learned something regarding that, since you've been new to the role that maybe benefits us just for our knowledge?
Right. So I feel like a lot of people, or me in general, thought of manufacturing as a hot shop, and it was miserable. As we do still have some of those shops that are like that, a lot of them now are AC cooled, or at least, you know, cooler than it used to be with up-to-date technology as well.
Okay. And then the other thing I was going to ask you is, I can't remember now. Go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, not a question, just a comment. I know you get asked a lot about what new jobs or what new businesses are coming to Claremore, and that's a big part of what you do. But thank you for supporting the businesses we have and growing them out of the bread and butter. And so this is such an important role in our community. So thank you for helping get more people employed and supporting those businesses that we already have.
Have you had, what's the feedback been from the existing businesses that are employing these individuals?
Yes, so we have some pretty significant challenges to overcome with regard to CNC machining, specifically our output ratio of students versus the incoming jobs is radically different. The other challenge to that, or kind of complexity that factors in, is most of our aerospace shops are not, the jobs there are not fit for a student. And when I say student, that could be of any age, right, we quantify that, coming direct out of that CNC program. And so trying to help encourage the leveling up of existing so you can kind of back, go back behind. And, you know, just because I can plug numbers into a machine to make it tool apart is very different than the actual programming and design and troubleshooting of that. And so that is a gap that we're working with our partners at Northeast Tech to address. We just did a community tour of six different CNC shops across Rogers County where the career tech professionals could hear direct from the shops, here's our need, here's the challenge. So we see that occurring, welding five years ago was a huge gap that we had, and that's kind of flipped to machining. You know, as Brayley mentioned, there's a lot of robotics, automation, the machine front 24/7, even robotic welders. I mean, we have a company that has 18 robotic welders, right? They don't call in sick. When they're doing something 300 times in a circle to an infinite degree, that has to get approved by DOD, FAA, whatever that may be, for particularly a defense purpose, the precision is different than with human error, right? So different jobs and different skill sets kind of come with that. And so that's why it's critical that we do things like Brayley's leading in the schools, so students understand, you know, what's there. Diversely from manufacturing, healthcare is another place that we see. We've obviously had some healthcare expansions that we've been involved with and driving, and so making sure that we're continuing to bolster that, you know, behind as we move people up through that workforce skill set is a communication critical as well.
Sounds like you're getting the communications in place to improve the program so the end results for the existing employers.
Absolutely.
Pan that out.
Right.
That's awesome. Any other questions or comments? Thank you both.
Thank you.
Staff reports?
I would certainly reiterate congratulations to Maggie and her team are in order. I would tell you, it's working in the building, it's very pleasant to come in to work with a group of folks that's excited to be here, has daily expressed passion for what they do, and lead by, lead for excellence by example, so we appreciate them. All of you know John's going to be out of town for the next, out of country for the next few days. If you have problems or concerns, reach out to me or Sarah, we can get you guys directed, whatever questions you might have, healthy out there. I want to express appreciation for those of you who attended the Leading Ladies Gala and members of the community that also attended, to recognize these ladies that certainly deserve our recognition. So appreciation for that. And then remind you that there's a current issues forum, chamber event at RSU on the 14th with Dr. Raleigh at 11:30 at Carolyn Taylor Chapman, Carolyn Taylor Center. So if you have any interest in going on behalf of the city, reach out to Sarah with my brainwash for that. But certainly be good to attend and listen to his story and offer support for that program lead forward. So that's about all I have. Yeah, that's all I have.
Thank you. Current business, do we have a motion to approve the consent items as printed?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Call the roll.
Thelman.
Yes.
Ruckerhoff.
Yes.
Cottum.
Yes.
Callender. Long.
Yes.
Bowlby.
Yes.
McSpadden.
Yes.
Irwin.
Yes.
I'm number four, discussion possible action resolution number 2025-13, authorizing Claremore Economic Development to apply for a Rural Economic Action Plan grant, support construction of a lagoon system at the Claremore Regional Airport. Ms. Maggie Roman.
So as you all may recall from previous city actions on what is referred to as the REAP grant, a REAP grant in the state of Oklahoma can only be used to impact less than 7,000 people. And so normally, Claremore Economic Development or the airport would seek this out because the cities had projects that fit that. And so in having discussions with the city, there was not a project that fit under the current budget system and all of that to align, and they asked us if we would like to proceed with this. Given that the airport population, right, so not its impact, but its population is less than 7,000, which fulfills the grant requirements, we are looking for authorization to simply apply for this grant. This grant reduces the burden, if awarded, of the funding that it takes to achieve a lagoon system. Currently, we cannot add another building at that airport until we address the lagoon. And so it is a significant barrier to its future growth. And so ultimately, we're just asking for your support to allow us to apply for this because those funds would have to run through you all as the municipal body with us as a public trust beneficiary for the airport. And so it doesn't conflict with anything else. The city might be seeking, it's just an opportunity to lessen the fiscal burden in the event that we were awarded this grant.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve is second. I have two questions. Is this a match, or is this?
So the match you can get out of this is $100,000.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then what would the cost be, estimate cost to build?
So depending on the site location, estimates are between 1.1 and 1.9 million.
And what do we think we'll get from the grant?
Not more than $100,000.
Yeah.
So then the rest will have to come from elsewhere?
From other sources. And there are other funding sources that potentially matches in addition to the airport or CETA take out of service for the remainder.
Okay.
Why do we need the lagoon to be bigger?
There's not currently a lagoon. There's currently a residential septic.
Okay, and so it requires a lagoon for this septic?
Okay, so it has a residential septic facilitating 98 buildings.
Wow.
Okay.
So the septic is not adequate for the building load, thus we cannot add any more buildings or we will be potentially violating DEQ policies.
Okay. Wow. Wow, sounds like it. Wow, sounds like it's desperately needed. Okay. We have motion second, any other discussion or comments? Call the roll.
McSpadden?
Yes.
Erwin?
Yes.
Cottam?
Yes.
Thelman?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Ruckerhoff?
Yes.
Foby?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm number five, discussion of possible action to enter into executive session to conduct confidential communications between the city council and its attorneys as appointed.
Motion to the, to enter into executive session.
Motion second, go into executive session, call the roll.
McSpadden?
Yes.
Ruckerhoff?
Yes.
Cottam?
Yes.
Thelman?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Foby?
Yes.
McSpadden?
Yes.
You're not important, I called you twice.